Lyon Township regular Board of Trustees meeting Wednesday, November 7th, 2018. Could we all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all. Could we please let the record show that Lisa did call in and she is not feeling well? And the rest of us are here, are present. Okay, moving on to the approval of the consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to take a look at that? Questions, or can we go ahead and...
Yeah, I just had just comments on the draft meeting minutes. I can either read those, but I did send Michelle an email with the corrections.
Okay. Yep, that would be fine. Yes.
You've got the email if you want me to read them.
Why don't you read them into the minutes? That way we have them.
Okay.
Yep. If you have it, do you have it?
Um, yes. I just got it. Just on, just on, I guess line 164 and 166, just specifying that it's the discussion had the second water tower. So just adding the word "second" in front of the water towers.
Second water tower? Okay.
And then, starting with, I guess, line 283, just some clarification. I can, there's a lot of little things, but I can read the whole paragraph if you, if you want. Trustee Enlow explained at the time, the attorney did not say anything about a developer not being able to pave that. At the time, it came as a new plan development, which has to be on a paved road per township ordinance, which is why the development was approved unanimously to include paving of a mile of road and a mile of pathway.
That's it? Is that due yet?
Good.
Are you good with that, Chris? Can you, can you...
Yeah, oh, yeah, yes.
All right, then, being amended, can we get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Can make a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Support.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the approval of the agenda. Any additions or doings?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on. Announcements and communications. I have kind of a cool announcement. Leslie and I are going to meet with the Road Commission on the 15th of November to talk about help with the paving of these roads we're going to pave. And, yeah, it's kind of a cool deal. They're kind of excited also. So, lot better than I thought, you know, really, really good. So, we'll have some good news after that, I think.
John, I feel like most communities complain, but, I shouldn't say it that way, but there's, there are a lot of complaints from people in general about roads, but we're actually, and have been for years now, offering solutions and trying to work with them. And that's probably not, it's not an easy thing. So, I think the fact that we're pushing ahead and you're making those, those contacts with them is probably going a long way.
It was actually a great conversation, and Leslie was a big part of that. And they're super excited, that's all I can tell you. They're happy that we're willing to put some money into the pool, and I think it's going to be a good deal.
I also would like to say that Lyon Township, we had, well, the state of Michigan had a big election yesterday, but Lyon Township did a 68% turnout, which is fantastic. We were, we were really busy in the morning, of course, everyone trying to vote before they go to work. We had steady lines all day long up until pretty much 8:00. So, it was very good. I'd like to thank my election team for the last two months of getting everything ready for the election. And thanks to our 60 election inspectors and AV counting board inspectors, we had 60 people working for us, and it all came together, and it was all good. And thank you to all the Lyon Township voters and for their patience and having to wait in line when the lines were long. But I wanted to thank everybody for getting out and voting. It was great. Good day. A good day.
Yeah, and to add to that, the employees of this township come to the plate like I've never seen anything.
Yep.
I mean, everybody pitched in. It was a huge election. It was a, Michelle was so busy, she did such a great job, and I just can't tell you how wonderful of a township this actually is. It really is. You can really tell how much is cared about it when you see something like that take place, and the amount of people that came through here, it was just absolutely amazing. And the volunteers were, I can't say enough, it was crazy. It was great. And you pulled it off without a hitch.
Yep.
Congratulations, Michelle.
A lot of new people this time wanting to work, which was really nice. And they just can't believe what goes on...
That was crazy.
...to get it done when they're used to just being voters and then seeing the other side of it. So, it worked out great. Good day.
Very, very great.
Long day, but good day.
Okay. Anyone else have any?
Yeah, I've got a couple.
Go ahead.
We had our SEMCAG meeting this month. Trustee Hicks attended with, with me. We had, went to a couple educational seminars there. The ones I attended were asset management and downtown development. We, the meeting was in Novi, so it was pretty close. And we actually had a great contingent, not only with the township, but with the city too. So, they, they had Councilman Kennedy and Bob Donahue, their DDA director was there too, as well as people from their Board of Review, Frank Fogarty over there. So, we had our, our little corner of the county well represented at the SEMCAG meeting. The second one, I guess I have, is the Dixboro Road paving project. The Road Commission had an open house. I attended there. Tina was, was there as well. And our county commissioner and Green Oak Township supervisor and representatives from, from the city of South Lyon and the Road Commission. So, because it's a border street, we had a lot of people there, and a lot of questions were answered by some of the residents that live over there. The Road Commission did kind of lay out a schedule where they're looking at starting the utility work in the fall of 2019, but the actual paving of Dixboro Road will be, will occur in 2020. So, that, that's kind of the schedule, is they had pretty much finished design drawings and are going through the final permitting process. So, that was a nice, nice meeting there too. And finally, to kind of follow up on last meeting, the Girl Scouts that were here that presented the free little library that has been installed out at Atchison Park, it's out in the park in front of the playscape that's out there. There's no books in it yet, but it will get populated with books in the, in the near future. So, when people are out there and their kids are playing, there'll be kid books, adult books, so, and the bench is there, so you can read while the kids play.
Great. Thanks, Chris. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, let's move to call to the public. This is where we'll take three minutes of time and come on up and talk about things that are non-agenda related. Name an address for the record, please.
Jim Chuck, 25365 Stanley Lane. I'm here tonight on behalf of the Carriage Club HOA, as well as myself, to thank the Board of Trustees for the Belladonna Water Project, for lack of a better term. As many of you probably know, there was a lot of discussion and animosity going around over the water. And, you know, I'm really happy that between the builder, you, the township, and the endless hours, years that Leslie put in, the project is completed. I check that regularly for many reasons. The water's flowing. Anyone who's ever been over there knows the water used to go over the asphalt, it was just, just a major issue. And at one point in time, we were in here as a HOA somewhat defending ourself, and bottom line is, it got taken care of between your efforts and the builder. And I have a special interest because the pond, I believe it's called a retention pond, Leslie?
Retention pond.
Backs right up to my home, and I see the water creep toward my basement, and I don't have those issues anymore. So, I just wanted to share that with you and thank you.
Thank you.
One other comment, and I'll make this quick, I think I got a minute and a half yet. But the other night, when I left here after a Planning Commission meeting, I headed east on 96. And what a sight to see how we're developing the businesses. Pratt Miller, Atlas Copco, Richard Tool and Die. I mean, there's a statement out there. People know we're here. And I think if you get the time, just take a drive down there in the evening, it's more impressive than in the day, trust me. And people say, wow, you know, these are, these are quality businesses, quality industry that's coming into this township, and it truly is a place to be. And I think we're starting to see it. So, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else? Come on up. How you doing?
Good.
Good.
Alice Fitzgerald, 59035 Treilani Road, New Hudson. I saw on the agenda that there is an item for the roof on the library.
Mm-hmm.
So, I thought I'd just give you a quick kind of history with the library and the roof. We had a renovation done in 2009, and we had roof issues before then. So, it was mainly in the library part. There were issues when we went to do the drop ceiling that we knew that was affected. And it would go into the light fixtures. A recent thing is there has now been a roof leak in the community center, and that's, that's new. So, just thought I'd let you know that this has been a long time that we've been dealing with this, and hopefully we can get that rectified.
Thank you, Alice. I think we have a good handle on it. Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to reports. DDA's first.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, I have a couple items to report on. In October, we had three ribbon cutting events. We had a ribbon cutting event at Cresson Orthodontics, which is located at 10 Mile in Milford, National Warehouse Center, which is on the corner of Oasis and Griswold, and also Ross Mortgage, which is at the Hudson Building in our downtown area. So, we'd like to welcome those businesses to our community, and we just ask everyone to take a moment and go and visit them and see what they have to offer. Also, excuse me, three township industrial manufacturers participated in Manufacturing Day, which took place on October 5th. Those companies were Kawasaki Robotics, Magna, and Harada. And I had the opportunity to go to the Kawasaki Robotics one. And how Manufacturing Day works is they, they collect a group of high school students, roughly 20 per company, and they transport them to the facility, and they're given a presentation, but more importantly, they're allowed to do some hands-on work while they're there. So, at Kawasaki, the kids were able to actually control robots. They were actually able to pick up boxes and move them around and see how they were being used in the medical field, logistics and all that. And they actually were able to use a robotic arm to make an ice cream cone. So, it was very exciting going on there. But it's a, it's a great opportunity to help these kids get exposure to modern-day manufacturing facilities so that they consider this as a future job opportunity for them. So, it was very successful, and we're looking to add additional companies next year to participate in our community. We have a nice variety of aerospace and automotive and just a variety of different type of corporations that can get involved. So, I think Test Tech might be participating next year as well. Also, last Friday on November 2nd, our DDA Vice Chair, John Bellinay, attended the, along with Sean, attended the Oakland County Showcase Event, where over 100 developers are invited to come in and view all of the communities in Oakland County. And we highlight those properties and opportunities that are available for development. So, it was nonstop three hours of constant networking, and we walked away with some really good leads. So, I'm looking forward to following up on those. Also, Exotic Automation and Supply is hosting a groundbreaking event on Monday, November 12th at 3:00 PM. So, you're invited to participate to that. It's going to be at their future location of their 134,000 square foot building that's going to be located on the corner of Haas Road and Grand River. Also, I wanted to give you an update on the website. So, all of the navigation for the website has been completed. And right now, we're working on what's called the migration of all of the documents into that new setup. There's over 6,000 documents involved. So, myself and Catherine are going to be meeting again with Revised tomorrow, because we're working with a third-party company that's actually taking all of our documents and migrating them in. So, as soon as that's completed, hopefully we'll have a mock-up then for everyone to be able to look at and give some feedback on. So, we'll give you an update, you know, as soon as that's completed. The DDA Board is working to finalize our 2019 budget, so we're working on that. And also, we have two more ribbon cuttings coming up in December. December 6th, the T-Mobile, which is located at 20742 Pontiac Trail. We're going to actually celebrate a year anniversary with them because they had a conflict when they first opened, and we just couldn't do a ribbon cutting event for their grand opening. So, we decided to do one for their one-year anniversary. And also on December 7th, Novella Pizza, located at 56849 and Grand River, our downtown, they're also going to do their ribbon cutting event. And then lastly, I just wanted to note that November 24th is Shop Small Saturday. This is a nationwide event that we encourage local folks to go to the local businesses and shop small.
That's us.
So, yes, and you, I'm working with our, with our Chamber of Commerce and Oakland County Economic Development, and we've ordered a lot of those type of giveaways that we can provide. We also have a big banner that we're going to put up. So, I would just encourage the public to consider further holiday shopping to support our local independent and local franchises. And that would conclude my report.
Nice. Thank you. Any questions for Tina? Okay, let's move on to fire. Chief Berry, anything for us? Nice to see you. Haven't seen you around much.
Chief asked me to come in in his day, he was tied up. Very brief report. The engine that we've ordered is back on track and should be here in January. That's the plan at this point, as long as all things go well at the manufacturer. The Halloween party was a couple weeks ago. We stopped counting at about 700.
Oh, my God.
With all the doors open and them coming in, all the doors, that was roughly about between 700 and 800 people came in that night. And then the chief is looking at possibly starting the cadet program, trying to get some, recruit some of the younger kids out of the high schools. Howell runs a fire academy, and I teach up there once in a while as I'm available and recruit out of there. We picked up a couple out of there. And we had a young man at South Line East that is going through, he's doing a split high school thing where he's going to high school and college. And he's going school craft to go to the fire academy. And they've contacted us about sponsoring him and, and doing a cadet program. As best the chief can tell, there's no cost involved for us. We have everything that they would need, turnout gear and uniforms of that nature. But he'll be bringing a resolution to the Board probably next month on that.
Oh, that's kind of cool.
Thank you.
It's kind of cool. Hey, can we do a ribbon cutting on that new engine?
I'm sorry?
Can we?
Yeah, sure.
Can we do a ribbon cutting on that new engine when it gets here?
Oh, yeah. Well, we'll do a ribbon cutting and what they call back in service.
Yeah.
Yeah. Michelle's probably seen it, where we actually push the truck into the station for the first time.
That is so cool. Let's do that.
There's a, there's a whole ceremonial process that we do when we put new trucks in service.
All right. I want to be part of that.
Yeah.
Thanks, chief. Yeah. All right, moving on. Lieutenant Venus, anything? Sheriff Department?
Good evening, everybody. Just real brief, nothing's really been going on. It's been relatively quiet. Halloween was very quiet. We had no issues there. And our Colts for the Code Drive, Colts, Colts for the Code Drive just started here at the beginning of the month, which goes to the end of the month. So, I think there's a box upstairs here, if I'm not mistaken.
It's right behind you. Yep, it's got codes in it.
Yeah, we have one downstairs, so if people come in and just have them put it there, then we'll collect them at the end of the month and ship them off to needy people.
Nice.
Other than that, that's all I have.
Great. Any questions? Thanks, Lieutenant. Moving on to the Planning Commission. Patty, how's it going?
We had two meetings in the month of October. The first one was October 9th. We had two agenda items. The first one was Aspen Trail, AP 17-40, but that was removed. The applicant requested that. I believe they were not already. We also had AP 18-52 Shadowwood PD, and what they wanted was an extension of their site plan because the utilities are not ready and the easements. So, we did grant that. Then our second meeting was Monday, October 22nd, and we only had one agenda item, and that was the Pratt and Miller parking lot expansions, and that was approved. And that was it. And that concludes my Planning Commission report.
Getting a little lighter.
Yep.
That's good.
Low and down.
Okay, Lisa is absent? I don't know. Patrick, do you know anything?
Uh, no. Our written report will be posted soon, but we're still finishing it up.
Did you, you didn't, did you go to the planning or the ZBA meeting?
Uh, we did. There was an agenda request for a variance for an enclosed porch on a corner lot on Lillian Street, and that variance was approved.
Oh, good. Okay. All right, thanks. Park Advisory Board, anybody from that?
I don't see anybody, but they had asked me to reschedule the November 20th Board meeting, which was the day, like, right there by Thanksgiving, and there's Park, and to reschedule the meeting for Thursday, the 15th, which I think they need due to their, working on their, their booklet, their...
The plans.
Master plan. There you go, sorry. Department master plan. So, they still needed that meeting, so we rescheduled.
Okay, great.
So, that's done? We did that? Okay.
Catherine's got it posted online, so we'll get that tomorrow.
Okay. Moving on, Bob?
Thank you, John. Over the last month, we have worked to winterize every fire hydrant in the township, and after that, we then went out and did a master flush of the hydrants and the system, and it was a really good thing we did. The water quality is much, much higher, and it's only going to get better as the winter and the spring comes upon us. We met with CRG, it's a lighting company, about repairing any of the lights that are out on the Southwest Ring Road. We did that today, and we're putting a package together on that that we'll be presenting at a future meeting. And we've also talked to DTE, so we'll put all that together. And, yeah, Patty's and John are both involved in that. We have an Eagle Scout project working on the cemetery along 11 Mile, which is outstanding. Nice young man. And I'd just like to comment, I've been around quite a few elections in my previous job to here, but I've never seen a crew organize and work so well towards a goal as what was just accomplished last night. And all I can do is applaud this group of people and led by Michelle, just spectacular. So, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Yep.
Appreciate that.
If I just, real quick comment, the new flushing schedule, doing it during the daytime?
Yes.
A lot of feedback I got was very positive on that.
Oh, yeah.
You know, when you're, I think it was 9:00, 9:00 to 4:00 was the time that the flushing was going to occur. So, for most people, they're living home, and they appreciated not having to hold off on whatever they would do...
Oh, yeah.
You know, that evening.
It was extremely thorough. In fact, a few, we ran overnight, in fact, because some of the system's dead ends at the south end of the community, took that much time to really clear them out. And we've, I've had probably a dozen calls of people amazed at how thorough it was. And I can only speak to Anthony and Highland Treatment, what a first-class job they did. But they were in contact with me and the township throughout the whole thing.
Yeah, and I appreciate that.
Yeah.
It sounds like possibly the most thorough job that we've had done in quite some time.
I think so.
So, I'm glad. I think the changeover in that department's working over really well.
I agree, Sean. Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, I can guarantee you, it was the most thorough flushing that we've had in years.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. I thought of another Eagle Scout project because I saw it on TV. So, just if anybody has one or thinking, I saw a standing sandbox that was built by a Girl Scout and a senior at one of the high schools. I think she was actually in the state of Michigan, and it was on the news. And it was very cool. And I thought that would be a good project...
You'll have to explain to me what that means.
Yeah, I would, but just, so I don't forget.
Yeah.
It's a standing sandbox.
Okay.
It was really neat, because the kids can stand and put their trucks in it, and they were making pure, you know, sand pyramids and doing all kinds of things. It was very cool. So, and so the kids aren't sitting in it and getting full of sand, but they're still playing, and you could work all around it on all sides. It had a little cover on it, and it was really cool. Anyways, my...
Add it to the list we have, Patty.
Yeah. I thought that was a good thing.
Yeah, that is cool. Okay, so that completes our reports. I'm going to move on to the next agenda item is the public hearings. We have two public hearings tonight, and these public hearings will be for the public to come up and comment on these certain issues. The first one that we're going to go into is to consider establishing an Industrial Development District, IDD number 13. And what I'd like to do before we open the public meeting, I would like for Tina to explain to the public exactly what that is. And we'll go ahead and open the, the meeting right after she's finished. Tina, would you please?
Okay. So, establishing an Industrial Development District is the first stage of a two-stage process for considering an abatement of real property taxes as set forth in Public Act 198 of 1974 as amended. The second stage involves a decision regarding the application and length of a tax abatement, which is also on the Board agenda later on. The Act provides two methods for requesting an Industrial Development District to be established. One is written request by the property owner, and the other is initiation by the local government unit. In this case, the township clerk received a letter on October 11th from Carl Zeiss Industrial Metrology LLC requesting that an Industrial Development District be established by the township to include two parcels of land located on the north side of Grand River Avenue and east of Old Plank Road that is zoned I-1 light industrial. The parcels to be included in this district are 21-12101026 and 21-12251014. A public hearing notice for this industrial district was published on October 17th, 2018, in the Oakland Press, and letters to the taxing jurisdictions and real property owners within the district were sent out via notification via certified mail. It must be understood that if the Township Board... I'll, I'll follow that up on the next part, but that is the, the report to open up the public hearing.
That's basically what, what this first public hearing is about. So, I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing at 7:29 and offer for any comments from the public on the industrial district. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close this public hearing at 7:30. Okay, the first one. Now, we're going to move to the second public hearing, and the second public hearing is a special assessment roll for the general purposes. And I'm going to have Patty go ahead and explain that before we open that, that hearing.
We have this every year. This is actually for, it's for the general purpose for delinquent water service charges, delinquent sewer, and usually lawn mowing, if we have to go in and remove that. And it also will include if we have to do any demolition. So, it's the role, this is our public hearing for it, and I will be rolling whoever is delinquent on the December 1st tax bill.
Okay. Okay, that's being said, I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing at 7:31, and it is open for any comment about the special role assessment. Okay, seeing no ones coming up to the mic, we're going to close the public hearing at 7:31 and move on to unfinished business. Okay, our first item in unfinished business is our water discussion with Artisanal Pioneer, Mr. Ed Keston.
Good evening.
Good evening, Ed.
Good evening, Ed. Um, Woodwind is going along really, really well. If you haven't been out there, come on out. You can actually, you know, so much of our work is underground and you can't see it, but now, now you can go out there and touch and feel and see big tanks and see what you're buying. But the tanks are all in. The building is almost complete. The brickies will be done tomorrow on the backside there, and the building will be complete. We've got it buttoned up now with doors. The last two doors are going to be installed on Friday. We've been installing the filter media in the filters. All the distributors are installed in the filters. All the media as of tomorrow will be inside the filters. The generator showed up yesterday or today. Was it today? I don't know.
It's been there.
Okay, but it's there.
Gigantic.
It's gigantic and it's there, sitting on the pad. Most of the underground piping is finished. The outside tanks are finished, the aerator's set. So we're moving along nicely there. Progress, we're far along now that weather's not going to stop us now. We're inside and the major plumbing will begin most likely next week. All the major Ts and valving has already been installed on the filter tanks. And so we'll start up the plumbing crew next week, most likely. On Friday of last week, I received an email and a phone call from DEQ that said that they were going to approve the South Hill well and water treatment plant both this week. I actually got a letter today from DEQ approving the well, so I'm keeping my fingers crossed that the water plant's right behind it. And if that's the case, I've got all the drawings in my car. I'm going to stick around tomorrow to meet with Leslie and John, and I'll submit those drawings to the planning commission for approval. And we should be able to get going on that plan as well. We'll just have to see how the weather. I'm hoping we can get footers and things in yet this year and get it up above ground so that we can work on it. We'll just have to see how it goes. But the main thing we're concentrating on right now is getting Woodwind up and running as quick as possible because Woodwind has the ability to supply all your water all the way through until about July. And we've actually turned South Hill's plan off for the time being. And so if we can get Woodwind up and running, we can get people filtered water and should make everybody a lot happier and cut down on next year's flushing, so.
Iron-free.
Iron-free, yeah. That's what we're hoping for. Any questions?
Yeah, Ed, I do have, now on the water tower, have you heard anything on the pan yet? If they're coming along or they will talk to you about that?
I reached out to them, or I didn't. Don and my office reached out to them last week. We didn't get anything definitive, but we'll, we'll continue to look at that. I'm thinking it's going to be, you know, the first week or so of December is the target date. And I think that's, I think, we haven't heard that we're behind schedule there at all, so.
Okay, I'm sure you're going to have some questions. Anybody? Go ahead and ask anything, Ed.
I'm going to just be repetitive, I guess, just wondering where the softening is at in the process. I know we talked about it last month and you're working along, but.
We got a plan forward. I want to get South Hill approved. Soon as, soon as I get the approval on South Hill, then we'll hit them hard on the softening option and go from there.
When you say option, is it different than the nano filtration that we talked about?
Yes, because of, I mean
Water usage issue that they're concerned about?
It's, it looks like we're going to have to go with reactive bed softening, simply because there's no place to put the waste. So we're still looking at it, but I don't, I don't know a way around your, you know, sewer situation, the way it is, to be able to get rid of the waste. And that's something that we have to do. So we'll go with, you know, our, our thought process is we will set up a pilot to do the bed reactors, which will soften the water. We'll have to do a pilot for DEQ. For how long, I'm not quite sure yet, a month, six weeks? And we'll obviously do a lot of testing during that process. And we'll be able to soften the water and not have to discharge large amounts of water to your sewer plant.
This was the option that involves sand?
Yes.
And there's more, it's lower cost initially, more maintenance and cost long-term. I believe it was initially what we had talked about, but then the caveat to all that or the issue is that if we can't discharge the way we want to, you know, the hard water, it's, it's fresh water into the ground, then we've got to put it into the sewer system and then the fees annually would be excessive to where that no longer was the most viable option from a financial standpoint.
Right.
And that's where we're at.
That's where we're at. Yeah, I believe that's where we're going to land. And, and just, I, the, the cost upfront is really not any less or more.
I'm just trying to haggle you out of a few bucks.
I know, I know you're trying to haggle. What, it, it will be a little more labor-intensive than a membrane system from the standpoint of the sand, but you know, it's the cost, the cost to operate will not be marginally greater either.
Okay.
They're, they're very comparable. And so that's, that's probably the direction we're headed. It, it looks like it's our only option and, but it will get the township softened water and, and filtered softened water, just like we, just like we planned to start with.
The softened water produces, you would know, would it be fair to say you would know no difference between the reactive bed system and the nano filtration system?
That's correct.
Okay.
Now, well, no, that's not correct. Because of your sewer system, the way, your sodium content's going to go way down because we're softening on the, on a central, centralized basis without using a sodium exchange, okay? Your sodium limits, which you are under strict limits with the DEQ on your sodium, they should go way down as people stop using their residential water softeners. So it's, it's going to be a huge benefit for you from that standpoint, so. But other than that, it will feel and taste and look just like soft water, yes. It just won't have the sodium in it that an ion exchange process would, for instance.
And everybody in this system can quit spending $32 a bag on potassium if they're still spending $32 a bag on potassium and not six bucks a bag on sodium, which you're not supposed to, right?
Yep. The water will be approximately, you know, 10, 11 grains hard because they, and you've got to leave it up that high anyway because you don't want to get into lead and copper issues with DEQ. And, and so they won't let you soften it down to zero. So it'll be about 11 or 12 grains hard, which means we're going to be removing about 50% of the hardness that's in the water, which is very comparable to anything that you would have elsewhere. And people should not need their water softeners at home. So yes, they will be able to bypass them.
Will any of the hair I've lost over the last few years grow back? Will it fix any hair?
It looks like it went to your face.
I'm compensating.
Okay.
So you should see the top of your hair getting a little shiny, so.
Well, I got to tell you, you were pretty ugly the first time I met you.
Nothing's changed, other than you need to get to the eye doctor if you think it's steady.
No.
Excuse me, are there doors on the tower yet?
You know, I don't, I forgot that. Okay. That's one question I forgot to ask, but yeah, that's all secured then if the doors are on it and we're in good shape there.
They've been on for about a week.
I haven't been by there in a week.
Thank you for the information.
Any other questions?
No. Thank you.
Anyone?
Thanks, Ed.
Okay, thank you. All right, moving on to this, the master plan for the sewer.
Yes.
And I'm sure hoping that we're all set with this.
Well, since the last meeting, there were a couple of minor revisions to the report. One of the items under 1G, we clarified that the high-density residential is in the DDA neighborhood districts, so we added that. We also added some clarification under the gravity sewer capacity analysis to segments A, B, and C, which we were discussing the last couple of meetings. We also addressed the first exhibit in your packet to move the pump station that will be constructed as part of Section 36. And that completes the changes since the last board meeting. So I, I think it's ready for your adoption unless you have any other questions or concerns.
Okay, well, I think that everybody has been emailing you and you've been working with them in the past month. So I'm hoping it's ready. Are we ready? Okay, let's go ahead and make a motion. Pass this resolution.
I'll make a motion to approve the resolution 20-18-11, adopting the sanitary sewer master plan as presented.
Second.
All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, moving on.
Thank you.
All right, we're into new business. This is resolution number 2018-15, establishing industrial development district number 13. This was the public hearing we just had, and this is adopting the resolution. So if we all understand that, I think a motion's in order.
I'll move the adoption of resolution 2018-15.
I'll support. Oh, go ahead, Patty.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving on to the resolution number 2018-16, approving the application for the Zeiss Industrial LLC for industrial facilities tax exemption certificate.
Did you mind me to give a follow-up on this?
Go ahead.
So for your consideration this evening, it is the approval of the resolution to establish an industrial facilities exemption certificate for Carl Zeiss Metrology. This is the second step involved in the process. I just wanted to recap this project for everyone. Carl Zeiss Metrology LLC plans to purchase approximately 34 acres of land on Grand River located to the east of Old Plank and to the west of Napier Road. They plan to construct an 81,000 square foot facility at an estimated cost of 3.4, $34.4 million in real property and 6.1 million in personal property with a total project cost of $44.5 million. They plan to locate 150 employees to this facility, and will be adding 30 new jobs over the next two years. The majority of the jobs' salaries will range from 50 to $100,000 annually. They are also combining four locations into one, and they will be promoting this facility as the company's center of excellence. The Line Township DDA Economic Restructuring Committee met on October 21st, October 25th, thank you, to review and score the application. The committee made its recommendation to support the application, which scored 849 points. Based on the points scored applied to the scoring system scale, the applicant would be eligible for 10 to 12 years of abatement. The committee did make the recommendation to the township board to support 10 to 12 years, but it is up to the discretion of the board how many years you would like to support if you were to adopt this certificate.
Okay.
I also want to note that Mr. Wayne Olson, who's the Vice President of Operations, is here this evening representing Zeiss. And if you have any questions, he's happy to answer those as well.
Okay. Everyone understand, this is a very, very high-end facility, and I think it's perfect for a 12-year abatement, in my opinion, and
Just for the record, because I think it's important to note, so for anyone wondering about tax abatements, they consider, they continue to pay the base property tax as, as it is today. What they won't pay is the increase after the investment.
It's actually a 50% reduction of taxes. So instead of paying 100% of their taxes from day one, they'll have a 50% reduction over the term. So after 12 years, then it reverts back to 100% of the payment. But also included in this resolution is the adoption of a letter of agreement. And this letter agreement is established between the township and the applicant, that they are required to remain in the township and to meet those job opportunity, those job expectations as well. And there's a clawback in that clause that says that if they were to fail to do that, then they would have to repay those taxes.
And I also, yeah, I just wanted to point out the score that you mentioned, which I just got out of here, which is, I believe, 849 points based on the criteria. I mean, in order to qualify for a 10 to 12-year abatement on the adopted point schedule, it's, you've got to get to 500 points. So this wasn't even close. I mean, this one has blown that scale out of the water. So if one was to ever come in and be considered, I mean, they've, they've gone well above and beyond. I thought that that should just be noted. I mean, there's scores out there, but compared to some of the other applications we've seen they've, which have also been good, but it's a very high score.
Extremely high score. So would like, someone like to make the motion to go ahead and approve that resolution?
Make a motion to adopt resolution 2018-16.
Second, for 12 years.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, thank you for a 12-year period of time.
I still second?
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on, special assessment resolution for confirming the general role 18-120.
Yep.
We didn't print this out because it was 26 pages long, but it is in your board packet. And since we have loaded that, we received 10 to 12 more payments in today. But I just want the board to know that until I get ready to roll for the taxes, we will be continually taking off any payments that we receive. And I just want you guys to know that. So whatever we even present today in, or in the, from yesterday, we've received 10 to 12 more payments. We just, Debbie was busy today and we're getting posted, but they were, we were up to date as of yesterday because I sent it to Chris.
When is that drop dead, deadline? When does it actually?
Well, tax bills will come out December 1st, so they wouldn't, they wouldn't even look at our tax rates until the election was over with. That's how busy the county was itself. So everybody's a little crazy at election time. So we weren't even able to start submitting our taxes. And we're still working on the drains right now because they just rolled the drains and we include the drains in our taxes. So we have a few things to fix on that. And our remaining special assessments from our DUT are still, we're working on those because we had some splits. So again, it's not as easy as what people might think, but, but we will continue to take those off. And we'll get ready and hopefully the tax bills will be out on time by December 1st, so.
I appreciate that we do this every year before anyone has an opportunity to get out of hand because you can't go longer than a year without paying these bills or it gets added to your taxes. I still think the total is somewhere around 132,000. And that's, that's not, township's funds, those are the water systems and sewer systems funds.
It's the customers.
Those user fees run that system. So it's important that everyone is paying their bills, so.
I, I think that's a really good point, Sean, so that people understand that this is not township dollars. This actually goes into the water enterprise fund or the sewer enterprise fund. They are not put together with any other general fund at all. And those funds belong to the operation of both those systems. So if you don't pay on time, even your penalty goes into that same pot to be used for the operations of the system. So that's a really good point. I'm glad you brought it up. So that people understand, nothing goes to the general fund. This is totally supports the enterprise funds that run both water and sewer systems. And the other ones are usually a payback that we expended. If it's mowing, we've already paid the mowing bill. If it's demolition, we've already paid the demolition. That would fall into the general fund, but just a little clarification of that, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the special assessment resolution confirming general purpose role number 18-120.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? All right. Moving on to the local government approval for the Liquor Control Commission for Wholehearted Winery, Inc., Small Wine Maker's License. And I believe this is just the township cocaine Wholehearted Winery to go to the, to the government and ask for a license. It's just our approval as a local board. I'm in favor of that.
I had a quick question, and I, I think this is great. It looks like, based on the information we got, this is a township resident who's opening up a business on another township property. So I think this is, this is great. I mean, this is what we like.
Yep.
And so I think this is, I'm not aware of another one like, quite like this, so.
I like it too.
Me too.
So motion be in order, and let's get him on his way.
I'll make a motion to approve the local government approval for Wholehearted Winery to get a small winemaker's license.
I'll second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Moving on, here's a discussion, this is more informational. This is the household hazardous waste that John Hicks has been working on, and I think he's come up with some things he'd like to talk about. So John, go ahead.
Well, we've come up with something I think it'll work well for us. There's an outfit called ERG Environmental, and anyone can dispose of their hazardous waste at any time they wish. waste at any time they wish, and their fee is 75 cents per pound with a $20 minimum. And if you have, if you only have a few pounds that comes out, I mean, you still, it's a $20 minimum. And anyone can join it, and we can have, we can host if, if we see what the need is. We can host a collection point right here, but they can't give a price on that until they have some idea of how many people use it. And they do keep track of everyone that uses this facility, and we can find out how many are using it. And in your packet, I think, you have the thing, they're open Monday through Friday, 9 to 4. They unload your vehicle for you. And many communities, if you notice on there, there's no charge for Milford, Farmington Hills, Novi, Partis South Lyon, Southfield. That is because they bill those communities. Those communities have decided they will pay for that. That'd be scary to do that, I think, without having some idea of how much, how many people are using it. But if no one has an objection, I think we should put this out on our website and have the contact, the information upfront, so anyone can, if they call about hazardous waste, this is a way to get rid of it. And there's no fees to us of any kind unless we decide to host a site.
Do they recommend, like, doing this for a year just to get an idea of how many residents use it, or wait a year or two to see?
Really, actually, I haven't done yet, but they already have. If anyone from the township has used it, they'll have that information for me. So I'm going to call and check, but I still think it's a pretty good solution, because of those that want to use it. And of course, the facility is on Merriman Road, just north of School Craft. So what is it, 25, 20 miles, 25 miles people have to drive? It's much better than getting in these deals where we have to pay a lot of money without, if anybody uses it or not.
But again, that was one time a year anyway that we hosted that, right?
No, it was, we had to pay the entire year, and the residents were able to go and drop off, but because so few used it, the $10,000 or $12,000 it cost us that year, divided by the 30 cars that came, it was very expensive per car, per car load. So this might be, I mean, I think this, anything will help, because we get so many phone calls at the office about people asking where to put or where to take. So if we note it upfront that it's the 75 cents a pound or a $20 minimum, they can save up and clean out their garage and take it, and go from there.
As you know, we've already checked with Nohas and Sacra, or No...
Rosac.
Rorsak.
Rosac.
There is a Sacra, too, but they're, and I did, I called Green Oak, and they have a facility that, just like this, they use. And I got this information from, what was it? I can't remember the community, I talked to so many people. But anyway, they shared this information with me, and I think it's a good solution.
What's you guys' thoughts? Anybody have any thoughts on doing something?
I guess my thought on this is if we went with something like this, I'd rather have a drop-off day here that's closer for everybody. If there's a way to estimate what, what cost it would be by looking at some of these communities, I see Milford's on there, but I don't know if that's just the village or the township itself, or if you got these from, like, Green Oak. You know, a community of similar size, I wondered if we can get at least a ballpark number on what it's going to be. Is it going to be, you know, $10,000 or something? I don't know. But I like the idea. I definitely have been contacted about hazardous waste, and I've had, had issues trying to get rid of my hazardous waste as well, so.
Bob, has the city done anything like this?
No, we never did.
Oh, they didn't?
No, they didn't. But they were always talking about it, searching it out, and I think they used Novi, if I'm not mistaken, or Wicksum.
Oh, on a day that they had the drop-off?
Yes.
But in order to do that, I think they'd have to be members of Rorsak.
They are, I think that's what they've done.
Well, Milford's, so that might, this might be the village, or they're just pointing out communities, not necessarily, because Milford uses Rosac, or they, the township does, I don't know about the village, but I know they are members there.
I thought, like you mentioned, of a local collection point, but that would be okay for batteries, just plastic batteries, things like that that we got previously, but you wouldn't want to get into paint and oil and antifreeze, I don't think we would. And they have a listing of things they accept.
Okay. Well, what do we, what do we do to maybe get some pricing? Do we want to get a, see if there's any way they can estimate a price for a drop-off day that they could, I mean?
Well, I, I think we should just see how, what, what kind of response we get to the calls we get, if we recommend them.
So you're thinking, go ahead and just get this out there and saying, we recommend taking it to here and seeing the response at first?
I think that's our only option at this point.
What do you guys, what do you think?
I'd like to get more information on the cost of what it would be to hold it back here.
I think we could do that, too. I think we could do that, too.
I think there'll be way more people participating if it was, like, you know, here at Township Hall versus 25 miles in South Polonia.
Absolutely.
But I don't think that they, you can't get it to stay here, it's like a one-time, once a year, correct? Yeah, so that would be a one-time thing, which we could still do, once we could get a price, but for people who can't wait or don't want to wait, I mean, you know, I mean, it'd be worth a trip if you have, yeah, if you have something to do or something to drop off that you don't want to keep anymore, instead of tossing it someplace else.
And when they're calling here, they have no idea where to take it.
No, they have no idea, and they're aggravated, and they, why don't, you know, where is the place? And, I mean, we're all in the same boat, we all need to get rid of that kind of thing, so.
What if we go with that? What if we say, okay, let's go ahead and advertise that, you know, we suggest you take it here, and then in the meantime, we'll start working on what would it cost for a day?
For a cleanup day every year, that would be awesome.
Hazardous waste day.
Yeah, and we have neighbors that are potentially wanting to be in the system with us, we could do a shared day and maybe...
Absolutely. Yeah.
Location, I mean, a few of our neighbors are on this list, so, yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea. So you want us just to start by maybe advertising this out, we'll get some more cost, and see if they have an idea of what a day might cost? I know that'd be hard.
This Mike Sapo, who's from Rorsak, said that we were a member and we left, and they may not even take us back if we wanted to.
But this is, is it...
This is different.
This isn't nothing to do with that.
Yeah, this is different.
Right, no, I get that, oh, yeah, no, I get that, we know that, we're just talking about having...
Well, we might not take them back.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right, well, let's do that. Let's just go ahead and we'll start this process rolling, and we'll see where it goes. I mean, it's been something that's been out there for a while, let's just do it.
Could put it in the budget.
Even sip.
Put money in the budget for next year.
Yeah, that's great. Okay, are we done with that one?
Yes.
Okay, let's move on to this performance resolution, 2016-17 for governmental agencies. And I'm thinking this is a required, this is, I think this has something to do with the Metro Act, right?
Well, this just, it's required every year by MDOT for you to be able to do work in the right way.
So they can work in the right way?
Yeah, it's pretty straightforward, you're each responsible for your own actions, and if you hire subcontractors or things of that nature, the township has to make sure that they ensure MDOT as well, and the state of Michigan, so very routine.
Okay, and this is state-required, so we don't really have a lot of choice here, so somebody like to make the motion to move this thing in?
I'll make a motion to approve the performance resolution number 2018-17 for governmental agencies.
Support.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, moving on. Here comes some fun stuff, people. This is, this is kind of cool stuff. We've been working on this for a while, and we finally were able to get three bids. And this is actually for getting a better presentation in the boardroom here for the people that come to see these meetings. We've got, we've got a couple of different options here, and I'm not a techie guy, and I'll tell you, I've talked to all these people, and they're driving me crazy. But, but I'll tell you, what really drove me crazy is when I walked in the room here tonight and talked to Ken back there, because he set me on a whole new path. So basically, this, if you look down these, these three estimates, they're all a little bit different. And the first one is kind of a small screen. That 75-inch flat panel screen, I think, is a little small for the boardroom. So the third, if you look at VSC and what they're proposing here, and then look down right underneath that, the Third Coast Tech, this Third Coast Tech company, all they do is audio/video, and I really liked the presentation that they brought me and the things they said, until I talked to Ken, and he's trying to change my mind to a degree. But they, they said 86-inch monitors are the smallest monitors you'd want to put in this room. You would not be able to see them very well from the back. The 75-inch I'm talking about, 86 would be the minimum. If you look down the Third Coast Tech, I know their price is a little bit higher than the VSC price, but they had a lot of extra things they were adding into this. They had some modulators that they were going to hook in, and I talked to Ken about them, where they actually, instead of, when a presentation comes up on the screen, they were going to wire back a plug to where Ken is, and he could actually plug into the wall, and instead of showing the screen, it would be live on his, on his camera. So that was a real, really nice thing that they added. These, these also have wireless microphones where it would allow us to take that podium and move it to the side, and I think that way, somebody that's talking on the podium could get a, you know, he could be on camera also, or she, and it would help that presentation, who they could actually see who was presenting. All of these screens are interactive, you can draw on them, you can hit them with lasers, they all have the capability of plugging fire sticks into them and present. They have mobile devices that you can work from your cell phones, if you give them the option, they can do presentations from phones. I mean, they're, they're really, really high-end. I really, really like the Third Coast Tech people, and I know that they ran out at $16,311 to put two screens in this room, one on each side. The one thing they were going to do, the, the screen on the right side of the room here would be a mirrored screen, it would work off of this screen. They're both on, on carts, so you can spin them around and move them. The nice thing is, I thought this screen could face the board, that screen could face the audience, and that screen would mirror this screen. One thing I liked that they had, they wanted to put a wire up in the roof, down to the side, and put a jack down there, where that one would wire to a jack, and you could actually move it down if you wanted to, to get a little better sight from the audience. It was really, really a nice presentation they gave. And as I talked to Ken today, he said, if, if we could get a not-to-exceed the number, the 16-3 number on the high side of the 3, then he would sit down and talk to me, and we would fine-tune this thing, so that when it came here, it would be the best we could actually get for what he's doing, and for the best opportunity for the audience to see the screens. And that's, that's kind of what I'd like to do. I'd kind of like to get a not-to-exceed that number from this board, and then we can put this thing in motion, maybe within, you know, by Christmas, we could have these presentation screens in the room. So that's kind of where I'm at with this. I did, I think you, did you get the, did you, did you guys get the flyers on these things? Did you get them in the packet?
No, no.
They're all right here?
This is all this in the packet, you had said to wait on that.
Okay, yeah, I think that we can kind of...
No, it's, it's this, all these pieces here, I think.
We can kind of take a look at these. Okay, these are the boardrooms. Just, you want to pass some of these down, and we can kind of look at the, these are the boardrooms.
Hey, John?
This is the whole package.
This is the whole packet, yeah. They've shaded this off.
These are all the old packages?
Yes, that's the whole packet.
These, these are the whole package, plus they have some options on it, and I'm only looking at the large boardroom?
This money would come from our PEG fund.
And I was just going to ask that question.
So it's really not coming out of the general fund?
Well, this is...
We can't use that PEG money for anything but, yes.
For actually equipment and hardware for the rooms, not the room, but could be used for the rooms.
Right.
And I was just going to ask that, we've been saving it up, and I think we've got probably twice as much in that fund if not more.
Oh, we have over $40,000, we just got a $5,000 payment, just this week.
There's, there's lots in the package.
Well, we've been talking about doing this to make it more interactive for those who want to be here or watch the meetings as well, and I, I think that, I think your idea of sitting down with Ken, who's the guy who is going to kind of make this all work, makes a great deal of sense, so I, I like that idea.
And it, it could end up that we go with someone else, you know, but I believe that that's the highest-end piece that we would get, that 16-3.
I'd do 20, just in case, so he doesn't have to come back. I mean, we, we have plenty of money. John wouldn't spend any money if he wasn't sure, just what happens if you pick and choose or move it, or...
Well, I mean, there could be other necessary equipment to make it really work, and to wait a whole month to come back for $500. I mean, I'm okay with that.
So as far as this, too, is are we going to have, as part of these packages, some, some training on it? Because I know when we have people come in and present, they, there's issues with just a simple projector and plugging in a flash drive with some of the presentations we get, so.
That's exactly what Ken was saying.
They can't remember using it 20 years ago.
Well, that was Ken's, that was Ken. He, he told me that some of these things that you get are not user-friendly whatsoever.
Okay.
So that would be the part that he would help me to get to the point where you plug in and it's on the screen, you're not hitting there, this button, that button, go over to that screen, hit the laser over there, and you're up.
Well, even if it's just something simple, it's just like a blanket training for, you know...
All of us, for all the boards.
I believe if, if we go with this Third Coast Tech, they have all that, and I think part of the training, she even said that she would come in and train and...
If I could speak for a second. The goal would be minimum training, it should be very intuitive, we don't want it to be clunky, we want people to come in, be able to use it right away without having any kind of, you know, needing a driver, needing any kind of special pieces to make it work. It needs to just work every time, or at least as close to instinctive as we can get.
And I think the one part that we were talking about is, one feature of this system was wireless, okay? And Ken had a little worry about the wireless part.
I have a little trepidation about wireless, because typically wireless means that you have batteries. And I've had some bad experiences where these batteries, especially a lot of these council meetings that we do, can go long, and the batteries will die right in the middle of a council meeting. And then that creates kind of a, you know, obviously a bad situation, so I try to avoid wireless as much as possible.
Makes logical sense.
So that, that would be bad, if the battery were dead. But that's kind of worrying.
Bob's got a really good solution.
It had to be sad.
My, my question is, is you said that they'll be able to, at home, you'll be able to see these screens, correct?
Oh, you'll see at home, yes.
That's the biggest, and I'm not...
No, no, you won't see the screen, he'll have it right live on his...
Right, you'll be able to see it, though, because that's the biggest complaint everybody that I know in my neighborhood has when they watch them.
Absolutely.
You know, and I know there's been a couple times I've watched them, you know, good thing I'm at home saying what I'm saying, so.
No, they, they, they will be live, that's part of the whole thing, the screen will be on screen, okay. So I think that's where I'm at. If, if you guys feel confident that I can get this thing done, that's what I'm asking you to...
So you're going to go with...
...accomplish.
You're going to go with a package that's been proposed by Third Coast Tech?
I would like to.
And then enhance it after sitting down with Ken to make it work perfectly for our setup?
Yes.
Okay. What's the not-to-exceed that you're looking for, John?
Well, the boardroom, okay, now if you looked at the options that I gave you, if you look through the options on there, there's several options in there, and the boardroom was one of them, and then another option on, in here, is the small conference room?
Small conference room.
And what that is, I think they're putting a 75-inch monitor in that room. The large conference room, they were going back to another 86-inch monitor on the wall in that room. And they also have an option to turn the large conference room into an audio conference center, okay? Whereas we have these conference calls that everybody, they put conference speakers in the ceiling, microphones in the ceiling, you dial in from the cabinet, and it's like standing right here in the room on a conference call. And if, if you, if you choose to completely set this place up with that, it's 34 grand. But that's in, that's all the rooms... But that's in, that's all the rooms, that's the boardroom.
This room, the large conference room, the small conference room, the boardroom, okay.
You mentioned, uh, for the small conference room, if these are on wheels, could you roll a monitor in there?
Yeah, but I don't know if you'd wanna roll these big monitors inside and out, and in the small conference room, they're putting the, the, uh, monitor right on the wall. They're attaching it to the wall, so it doesn't take up a room, because it's small in there. And every one of these screens are interactive, you can draw on them with your finger, you can erase things, they're all firestick plug-in, um, it would just turn the hall into a, better suited for presentation.
Will laser pointers show up on them?
What's that?
Will laser pointers show up on them?
It does, they have special pointers that work on them. And that also include, it also includes the audio part, where it does take three microphones, which, it'll be the Bob's microphone, engineer microphone, and the podium microphone, and turn it to wireless. And the reason we have, that I'd like to do that, and we'll have to check on the, on the batteries, because again, I, I don't know, but it, it gives us the opportunity to get rid of cords and trip places in the middle of the room.
Well, and in particular, if someone's giving a presentation or speaking at the podium, everyone else is staring at their back.
Well, that's why I'd like to side them.
Right, it would be nice if, yeah.
So that's kinda where we're at, and, and we can either do everything, or we can do the boardroom. I would love to get the boardroom done, I think it's, it's really not good to the audience to look at that screen anymore.
Now, in terms of, uh, in terms of budgeting and stuff, we've been saving these funds for a while, and you said...
They're very accumulative.
We have over forty thousand dollars.
So it's, we've been planning.
We got that in one check.
Yeah, actually, I think it's...
Well, actually, two twenty thousand dollar checks, plus, we've been collecting our PEG fees for a couple years, they're five thousand dollars each.
And again, that money can only be spent on this stuff, so it's...
I think it's...
Either make the improvements that we can use and benefit from, or it just sits there.
I think the fund is, I think the fund is closer to one fifty.
Really?
Mm-hmm. It's, we have a lot of money in there.
So that's, that's the scoop, guys, you know? If you wanted to completely do the entire hall, go ahead, with Ken.
Yeah, just a quick comment, I think Patty's suggestion of not to exceed twenty K seems a little bit, um, more feasible. I think the sixteen, it could probably come in underneath that, but it might get a little bit tight.
Yeah, I'm looking, I'm looking more at not to exceed thirty-five.
Right, 'cause you're looking at doing everything?
All the rooms.
Well, that's all the rooms, that's the entire building.
But maybe say forty, just, because it's, we don't, that's what, I mean, we have plenty of money, I mean, we're not gonna use it or spend it willy-nilly, it's just...
Yeah, I, I'm, I support moving ahead with it, I'm, I think, just knowing how much, I mean, there's checks coming in every year for probably forty thousand, and there's money sitting there, it can only be used for this.
One fifty in there.
And now we're, yeah.
So if you wanted to...
If you're talking about it, we may as well do it.
This would be very nice. If you wanted to do this, it would be a not, the boardroom would be, like Patty said, maybe twenty. If you wanted to do the entire building, it would be thirty-five.
I, I'll make a motion, if you are calling for a motion. I'll make a motion to go with Third Coast Tech, with John, um, negotiating the equipment and the price, and I would like to go with a not to exceed forty thousand dollars, to do the boardroom, the large conference room, and the small conference room.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a support, uh, any further discussion? Anybody wanna add anything?
Just specify this, coming out of the PEG fees.
Oh, PEG, I, I agree with that, to be withdrawn from the PEG fees, in the budget.
Any other discussion? Still good? Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, nice rooms coming up here. Okay. Now, this is the fun one. This is the lib, this is the community center and library that has been needing a roof since I've been on the Board of Trustees in two thousand eight. Every single year, we put thirty thousand dollars towards the budget to fix the roof. And here we are, this many years later, and the roof is still leaking, and it is not getting any better. We had a major leak here, I think, two weekends ago, when we had all that rain that actually took down some of the drywall in the community center. So, that being said, we went out and we tried to put some prices together on this roof, and if you look at the way these prices come back, and I had Bob, Bob was excellent in this, he was helping me through this big time. We had, we had actually four estimates that come back, I think two of them actually did cores, they actually cored holes in the roof to check the roof, they, they've come back with a lot of different, uh, problems. Bloom Roofing, the one on the top, they cored the roof, and they told us that there was actually two roofs on the library, there was one original, and then another company came in to try to repair the leak and put a flat roof over a flat roof, which he said that is absolutely, uh, no-no in the, in the flat roof business. The water basically gets under one roof, and it travels anywhere on the other roof, finds a hole and comes through, you can't even find the leak. His, his, what he said that we should do is to completely remove the roof, get rid of it, and put a, a brand-new roof insulation, new pitches and everything on it. Now, to do that, his price ran about sixty grand, it was fifty-nine thousand, one-twenty, that was a complete tear-off, and a complete, brand-new roof with a twenty, I think it was twenty to twenty-five-year warranty?
Twenty-five to thirty years.
Twenty-five to thirty-year warranty. The only, the only thing, he, he needed a contingency...
Can you pass this down to Sean? I just realized that last page with the price is not on here, so I apologize, we loaded it.
There was, there was an area on the top that had a gas line that needed to be raised, and there's also some electrical that needs to be reposted and redone on the top. Now, he didn't include that in here, and he, he told me, he said, "You guys could probably get that done on your own." But I wanna turnkey on this, I'd like to have one contractor responsible for the entire job, so I asked him to price it with everything, and he came back, he said, "If you put another five thousand into this, it would be turnkey." So that price was sixty-five grand, basically, complete. All right, then the next guy came in, and this A&amp;Z Roofing guy, I believe he wants to repair the roof.
Correct.
Now, the first guy told us it's non-reparable, it needs to be removed, and it needs to be brand-new. This guy come in, and for thirty-five thousand, seven hundred, he's gonna go in and he's gonna repair the roof, but he's got some things in here, if necessary, and it needs plywood, it's fifty-two dollars a sheet, and I think that we figured out, there may be a hundred and seventy-five sheets of plywood on here, I don't know how many are bad, or how many are good. And then there was a couple other pricing, uh, there was a couple other places that he said that he wanted to add money if this happened, if that happened. We wanted to upgrade the warranty to a twenty-year, was another so much per year. I don't know about that, that one there, I think, is gonna be, by the time it's all said and done, he's probably, when he adds his extra plywood in, and I'm not sure how he's gonna repair the roof either, because it's a mess, it's a real mess. I would imagine he'd be around fifty, when it was all said and done, that's just my thought, I don't know that for sure. And then the third guy came in, retrofit, I have no clue what that even means, he wants to retrofit the roof, and I'm not even sure what he's talking about. And we talked to him a long time, "Oh yeah, we do this all the time, we, we pull this off, we pull that off, we retrofit this, we..." And he was fifty-one thousand, seven eighty-five. And we had a fourth guy come in, that was ninety thousand dollars, and, uh, so, so I'm sitting here and I'm going, "You ask me, I've been a contractor most of my life, I like Bloom, tear this thing off, take it down to nothing, re-insulate, restructure the entire roof and finish it brand-new. Call it sixty-five thousand and good to go." But that's me. And you want this done for the next twenty years, I mean, we've already gotten about fifteen extra years out of, it's a twenty-year roof, and we're in our fortieth year, I think.
Sounds like part of the problem is, it wasn't really done right when it was fixed, however many years ago, it was probably a cheap fix to get through a period of time, and now it's just even more expensive to go back to where it needs to be.
Well, you, you understand what we're up against, when you have four different people come in, four different ideas how to tackle this issue and fix it. Flat roof, but I will say this, um, they were all very professional, all totally upfront. I was out there with two of them, in fact, one of them even fixed a hole when he was up there, which I thought was awesome, you know? But I agree with John, I mean, uh, I think if we do this going forward, the legacy will be, it was fixed in two thousand eighteen, for the next twenty, twenty-five to thirty years. And he thought, there's a possibility they could start next week, if the weather holds, fifty-fifty, if it doesn't, at the latest by spring. And he was nice enough to hold his price, which this was a quote from back in May, I believe.
And the other thing is, we have to understand that this is a major project for the library, I mean, these guys are gonna be tearing a roof off, and they're gonna, you know, it's gonna be probably during hours, and there's gonna be stuff flying, and there's, it, it's gonna be a major project, this is not gonna be a simple thing.
Yeah, how many, how many days is he...
Seven to ten days.
So will the library, uh, have to be closed during part of this time? It seems like it could be dangerous for people coming in and out while they're...
Well, they're gonna work off the side, probably the north side of the building, which still gives it, but a certain amount of the parking will probably be secured for a dumpster and that kind of stuff.
Lots of blue terps.
Yeah. Now, the, the other thing, I will say, that Bob has said that, I, did you say it was R&amp;R that you worked with before?
Um...
I myself have worked with Bloom.
Actually, it was the one we didn't bring to the table.
Oh, they didn't show?
Yeah.
Okay. I mean, this retrofit thing, I, I don't really even...
Yeah, we're not sure, uh, the A&amp;Z is currently doing the DMC roof down, downtown Detroit, down Hospital, but they were doing a complete tear-off there and replacement.
So I guess if you guys have any questions, or if you feel confident that any of these are, you want us to get some more, I guess we possibly could keep hunting down and keep, uh, going after this, but I'll tell you, this library needs a new roof. We can't, we can't put it off anymore. And, and by the way, in our budget last year, we have a line item for the roof, and, and we had a line item for the roof and the furnace, we had a roof and furnace in that line item, the parking lot, and we put a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars into that budget, and we have not done any of them.
I talked to Bloom today, and, uh, so I mean, this is a very current conversation, so...
And this will replace the entire roof on the entire building?
No.
Just on the flat?
Just the flat roof on the north side?
Correct.
What's the condition of the south side? That's about a third of the roof.
I think okay.
Every one of them said that that roof was fine.
Yeah.
Every one of them.
And that's a completely different roof system?
It is.
That is correct.
So that's kinda where we're at, I don't know which, how you guys feel about this, if you, and, and I'll tell you what, I'm sure, I'm sure probably any one of these would probably work, I'll be honest with you. I think they, they're all very professional companies, I think that the thirty-five thousand dollar bid is not gonna be thirty-five thousand, so don't even look at that. I think there's gonna be a lot of ruined plywood on that roof, and I think a lot of the plywood's gonna have to be replaced.
Well, you don't wanna repair it anymore, it needs to be, it's removed, I mean, it's just ridiculous.
So anybody have any ideas, thoughts? Bloom, I, I will tell you, I have used Bloom in the past, Bloom is a very good company, they stand behind their work, and the nice thing is, they're right around the corner, they're right in, uh, off of, uh, Kensington Road, in the industrial complex right there. So they are local.
So this will hit the community center budget, which we budgeted a hundred and forty-five thousand this year, twenty eighteen?
We did.
To get that fixed?
We did.
I say go with Bloom.
There are three totally different ways to fix this, so I, I guess it all goes back to what you're comfortable with. A complete redo, retrofit, or a repair.
I guess the, the only reason I would consider the repair is just the future longevity of the building, if, if it is gonna be a, if that, you know, if this building's gonna continue to be used.
We'll always have it as a community center.
We have to.
We have to.
We have to pay back for the building.
CDVG funds?
Yeah, we will always...
No, we got it way back, it was a grant from the state.
Oh, okay.
So it's one of our buildings, even if it's just a...
It belongs to us, the township.
Right, right. I didn't know if it was like a CDVG fund type of attachment to it.
We'd use it for some...
We have to use it for some kind of community venue for it. So, even if, if the library were successful down the road and moved out, we would use it for something else that would benefit our community.
Okay, that pretty much answers my question on it, so...
I, I agree with John and Michelle, I, I know it's a lot of money, but it, you gotta bite the bullet sometime.
Well, given the recent leak, it sort of accelerates this, it's sort of an emergency, and, um, you know, we can't, I mean, and I think it needs to be done now, not this spring, so...
I'm hoping.
Yeah, I mean, I, I push them, I think...
Well, think about it, they have so much inventory in there, and so much, you know, we really can't even, you know, update our community center until the roof is fixed, there's no sense in putting any more money into it till you, you get the proper thing done, you know, then we're gonna have, it needs, you know, carpet, flooring, it just does, but it would be horrible on our part if we didn't fix it and...
I'm ready for a motion.
All those books and, you know, that's their whole existence.
I'd make a motion to contract with Bloom to, for not to exceed sixty-five thousand dollars for a repair on the library roof.
That's a replace, replace.
Total re...
This is a total replacement.
Total replacement of the roof, yes, not repair.
I'll support that.
Okay, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, we get the library fixed here. All right, moving on to our last item here in regular session, is the budget discussion, the two thousand nineteen budget discussion. And, and really, all I'd like to say on this budget discussion is, I'd like to ask if we can have a workshop set up for November seventeenth, that's a Saturday, at ten AM. And my thoughts are, we are very, very close to finishing the budget, and I would like to email that budget out to you guys in full for next week, and give you the week to look it over, maybe contact us to see if there's any changes you wanted to make, or easy ones, and then I'd like to sit down on a Saturday morning and hash it all out and get it, everybody's happy. So I guess my, my question on this whole thing is, do you, can you guys show up ten o'clock on the seventeenth, here, it's Saturday, and let's, uh, workshop this thing out?
I should be...
I know, Sean, I think you can.
I'll be out of town, but I will, John, I will get you any comments I have, I'll get them to you, so you can just have them, if you'd like.
That'd be perfect. Chris, can you make Saturday, you think?
Yes, I'll make it work.
John?
Is it Ohio State?
It's been to my wife.
No.
Michelle, you can?
That's exactly what I pulled up, Michelle.
I figured you'd know. Is it Thanksgiving weekend?
No.
It's Ohio State, isn't it?
The weekend before.
Yeah, this is the weekend before that, Thanksgiving weekend is Michigan, Ohio State.
Oh yeah, that's what I meant.
So are we good on ten?
Watching that game, yeah.
Ten o'clock on the seventeenth, yes.
Seventeenth work for everybody at ten o'clock?
Yeah, but if you guys see anything you wanna add, send it to us right away, if you don't mind, or look at it and try to add it in. you don't mind, or look at it and try to add it in.
Okay. Well, that's all I had on that, I think we can get that handled on that, on that date. Okay. Move on to the closed session. Somebody like to make that motion?
I'll make a motion that we enter into closed session for consideration of a closed